Morning, Deanna. How are you?
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm good. How are you?
All right. Good morning, Tech Support Serena, right? I just want to confirm that we are live streaming and that I'll start in one minute?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. Good morning. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. I'm Sue Ellen Burns. I'm a member of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks and I will be the hearing officer for today's meeting. With me today are Suzanne Halal, Assistant Corporate General Counsel, Supervisor of the Real Estate and Land Use Division of the City's Law Department, who is the Commission's counsel for today's public hearing, and Deanna Cuvalo of the Historic Preservation Division of the Department of Planning and Development. This hearing will be conducted per the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public hearings issued by the Chairman of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks in accordance with the Chairman's emergency ruling powers pursuant to that certain rule adopted by the Commission pursuant to a resolution at the Commission's regular meeting on June 4, 2020. These emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public hearings on landmark designations are effective as of July 7, 2021 and shall remain in effect until there is no longer a disaster proclamation issued by the Governor of the State of Illinois. During the period the emergency rules are in effect, they supersede any conflicting rules and regulations regarding the conduct of public hearings on designations under Section 2-120-680 of the Chicago Landmarks Ordinance as such rules and regulations are set forth in the Commission's rules, including but not limited to Article 2 of the regular rules. The purpose of these emergency rules is to permit the Commission to conduct public hearings on landmark designations under Section 2-120-680 of the Chicago Landmarks Ordinance while taking appropriate measures consistent with the guidance of the City Council, the Governor, the United States Centers for Disease the United States Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and the Chicago Department of Public Health to mitigate the contagion and spread of the COVID-19 virus. I will now summarize the nature of today's hearings. The Commission on Chicago Landmarks was established and is governed by the Municipal Code of Chicago. The procedures for today's public hearing are contained in Article 2 of the Commission's Rules and Regulations Governing Hearings on Landmark Designations. These rules and duties of the Commission are set forth in the Municipal Code and include the identification, preservation, protection, enhancement, and encouragement of the continued utilization and the rehabilitation of such areas, districts, places, buildings, structures, works of art, and other objects having a special historical, community, architectural, or aesthetic interest or value to the City of Chicago and its citizens. The Commission carries out this mandate by recommending to the City Council that specific areas, districts, places, buildings, structures, works of art, and other objects be designated as official Chicago landmarks. The Commission bases its recommendations on the seven criteria set forth in Section 2-120-620 of the Municipal Code and the integrity section set forth in Section 2-120-630 of the Municipal Code. The purpose of today's hearing is for the Commission to receive relevant facts and information to assist the Commission in deciding whether to recommend that Eppworth Church meets the criteria set forth in Section 2-120-620. I want to note finally that the Commission's rules and regulations strictly limit presentations at this landmark designation public hearing to information solely relevant to whether or not the proposed designation meets criteria for Chicago landmark designation. In accordance with the Commission's rules and regulations, information related to zoning, permit applications, the building code, or potential economic impacts is not to be heard or entertained during these proceedings today. The format of the hearing will be as follows. First, Deanna Cuvalo, head of the Historic Preservation Division, will review the chronology of events related to the proposed designation that has led to today's hearing. Then I will rule on any requests for party status to the hearing by property owners as well as other individuals or organizations. After that, Matt Crawford of the Commission staff will make a presentation summarizing the preliminary landmark recommendation for the proposed designation of Eppworth Church. After that, or excuse me, after the staff's presentation, property owners or other individuals who have been granted party status will have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff. Then those granted party status by me will be able to make a presentation regarding the proposed landmark designation. Lastly, any member of the public who wish to speak, who wish to make brief statements concerning the proposed landmark designation may do so. The property owner or their representatives have the right to make a statement for or against the proposed designation. They also have the right to ask questions of Commission staff after completion of the presentation by the staff. The Landmarks Ordinance also allows property owners and other individuals and organizations to request status as a party to the public hearing. Parties to the hearing's proceedings can make longer and more detailed presentations for or against the proposed landmark designation. That can include submitting photographs and other documents as well as presenting testimony from their own witnesses. Parties may also question any other parties' witnesses and question the Commission staff who summarized the preliminary landmark recommendation. Now, I will ask Deanna Cuvalo to outline the chronology of events related to the proposed landmark designation of Eppworth Church that has led up to this public hearing and incorporate the Commission's documents that are relevant to the proposed designation into the record. I would like to incorporate, oh, excuse me, Deanna?
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. On May 15, 2022, the Historic Preservation Division received an application to demolish a church building completed in 1891 and an attached community house addition completed in 1930 known as Eppworth Church, the building. The building was ranked orange in the Chicago Historic Resources Survey and the demolition application was therefore subject to the 90-day demolition delay ordinance. As a standard practice during the demolition delay, staff evaluated the building for a possible landmark designation and determined that it met criteria for landmark designation. At its regular meeting of July 7, 2022, the Commission on Chicago Landmarks Commission approved a preliminary recommendation for designation of the building as a Chicago landmark. The Commission found that the building appeared to meet four of the seven criteria for designation as well as the integrity criterion identified in the Chicago Landmarks Ordinance, Municipal Code of the City of Chicago, Section 2125A. The preliminary recommendation identified as Commission Document 1 initiated the consideration process for further study and analysis of the possible landmark designation of the building. As part of the preliminary recommendation, the Commission preliminarily identified the significant historical and architectural features of the building as all exterior elevations, including roof lines of the building, including the church building and community house addition. As part of the preliminary recommendation, the Commission also adopted a preliminary summary of information dated July 7, 2022 and identified as Commission Document 2. In a letter dated July 12, 2022, identified as Commission Document 3, the Department of Planning and Development, on behalf of the Commission, notified the owner of the building of the preliminary recommendation. At its regular meeting of August 4, 2022, the Commission received a report identified as Commission Document 4 from Marie Stee Cox, Commissioner of the Department of Planning and Development, stating that the proposed landmark designation of the building supports the city's overall planning goals and is consistent with the city's governing policies and plans. In a letter dated August 5, 2022, the Commission requested consent to the proposed landmark designation from the owner of the building. A copy of the letter, which requested the return of an enclosed consent form indicating consent or non-consent by September 19, 2022, is identified as Commission Document 5. On August 15, 2022, the Commission received a letter from the owner's attorney, identified as Commission Document 6, requesting a 120-day extension to respond to the Commission's request for consent as provided for in Section 2120650 of the Chicago Landmarks Ordinance. In a letter to the owner dated August 16, 2022, identified as Commission Document 7, the Commission informed the owner that the extension was granted and that the request for consent should be returned by January 17, 2023. On January 12, 2023, the Commission received a form identified as Commission Document 8 from the owner of the building indicating their non-consent to the proposed landmark designation. Without consent from the owner of the property, Section 2120650 of the Chicago Landmarks Ordinance requires the Commission to rule a public hearing on the preliminary recommendation with respect to the designation of the building as a Chicago landmark. In a letter dated March 1, 2023, identified as Commission Document 9, the Commission notified the owner of the building of the public hearing being held today. A notice of the hearing date was also posted as a sign in the public right-of-way in front of the building and an affidavit and dated photographs from Matt Crawford of the Commission on Chicago Landmark staff confirming that the sign was installed at 5253 North Kenmore Avenue on March 10, 2023 are identified as Commission Exhibit 10 and was published as a legal notice in the Chicago Tribune. A certificate from the Chicago Tribune attesting to the publication on March 6, 2023 of the legal notice for today's public hearing date is identified as Commission Document 11. The public hearing notice was also posted on the Department of Planning and Development's website. Copies of photographs and text used in the Commission staff's presentation at today's hearing are identified as Commission Document 12. Other correspondence, emails, and petitions received by the Commission pertaining to the proposed designation are identified as Commission Document 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. I would like to incorporate these documents of the Commission into the record. The Commission's documents are available for inspection via request. Those wishing to request party status are asked to file an appearance form 48 hours prior to the public hearing. We have received a request for start party status from Michael Jones of the Church Properties Reimagined, representing the property owner. I will grant Mr. Jones party status. The landmark ordinance also allows that certain other persons, organizations, or legal entities to become parties to this proceeding. In this category, we have received a request for party status from Kurt Bedeker, a potential purchaser of the property. I will grant Mr. Bedeker party status. We have received no additional requests for party status. Next, we will hear a presentation by Matt Crawford of Commission staff summarizing the preliminary landmark recommendation for Eppworth Church. Matt, please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. I just wanted to note that Alderman Osterman is on the meeting. He's showing up at Dan Luna, who began his staff. So I know that the Alderman is in another council meeting right now, but as soon as he can jump on, we just ask that we raise hands virtually and we can bring the Alderman into the conversation. So just on to the staff presentation for Eppworth. Eppworth Church consists of the church building at left in this slide from 1891 and a community house addition from 1930 on the right of the slide. Architecturally, the church is, if not unique, a very rare example of fieldstone architecture in Chicago that uses uncoarse granite boulders in its wall construction. Eppworth was listed in the National Register of Historic Places in 2008 and it is published in the AIA Guide to Chicago. The congregation no longer worships at Eppworth and the property is owned by Church Properties Reimagined, which is affiliated with the Methodist denomination. Eppworth is located at Berwyn and Kenmore Avenues, seven miles north of the Loop in the Edgewater community area. As Deanna stated, at its meeting of July 7, 2022, the Landmarks Commission preliminarily found that Eppworth meets four criteria for Chicago landmark designation. I'd like to go through these one by one. The first is criterion one, heritage. Part of Eppworth's heritage value is that it shows how Edgewater developed. This rendering of the church by its architect from 1889 depicts Eppworth as a picturesque suburban-scale church that would look at home in the English countryside. This design reflects Edgewater's first phase of growth as a leapy retreat that attracted the Victorian-era Chicagoans seeking open space, access to the lake, and convenient transit service to downtown. Another aspect of Eppworth is its social heritage of collective effort that brought the building into fruition. The land on which it sits was granted to the congregation by John Cochran, the developer of Edgewater. The design of the building was donated by Frederick Townsend, a congregation member who was also an architect. And funds for the construction were raised from the community and many who gave were not originally members of the congregation. Eppworth's heritage, like most houses of worship in Chicago, reminds us of the important role that religious institutions played in the social fabric of Chicago's neighborhoods. In addition to heritage, the Commission has preliminarily found that Eppworth, both in its church building and community house addition, which both combine Gothic and Romanesque elements, also meets criterion four for architecture. As I mentioned earlier, the church, as well as the addition, are constructed of uncoarse granite fieldstones. These boulders came from a property in Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, owned by a founding member of the congregation. They were shipped by Lake Bard from Racine, Wisconsin, and unloaded at a pier at the end of Berwyn Avenue, which at that time was just 600 feet from the site. Here are a few details of the fieldstone walls. The granite is left in its natural shape and exhibits a variety of colors. This type of wall construction requires tremendous skill in design and construction. The result is a wall that emphasizes visual interest through shadow, mass, and natural form. Here is the gabled front of the church framed by a 65-foot-tall bell tower graced with a round corner turret at the north. And at the other end of the gable, an octagonal tower which frames the south end of the building. The entrance portico is from a 1930 renovation and is built of cast stone with Romanesque detail. The side elevations have Gothic revival wall buttresses that frame Joliet limestone windowbys with arc glass casement windows. Here is the east end of the church, which includes a transverse volume topped with a cross gable. The rear elevation facing the alley at left is atypical in that it is finished with granite and colored elevations. As noted earlier, the second architectural element of Eppworth is the sedition known as the community house. The complementary design came from the Chicago firm Fieldbar and Fugard. It was completed in 1930 to address the needs of the congregation, which was growing as the population of the neighborhood had been increasing. The exterior of the community house combines granite fieldstone with crisp cast stone details. Cast stone is a refined form of concrete cast in custom molds to mimic carved stone, and it was a new material in 1930. The entrance bay at left is rendered with Gothic towers with the window bay at right featuring an arcaded portable table of Romanesque design. With respect to the architects who shaped Eppworth, the Commission in July of last year preliminarily found that both the designer of the church building, Frederick Townsend, and the architects of the addition, Fieldbar and Fugard, both meet criterion five. In addition to Eppworth, notable works by Townsend include the Five Houses on Abrams, a Chicago landmark district in North Lawn Dale, which is attributed entirely to Townsend. He also designed the Gruziger House, a prominent building in Arlington Deming District, and he designed a reconstruction of the Scottish Rite Cathedral in the Washington Square Landmark District. These are all well-detailed 19th century works in revival style of architecture. And then, a generation after Townsend, the partnership of Fieldbar and Fugard designed the community house of Eppworth. Other significant works by the firm include the Trustee System Service Building and the McGraw-Hill Building, both designated Chicago landmarks. Finally, the Commission found in July that Eppworth meets criterion seven for its distinct visual presence in the neighborhood. The wall construction is very unusual in Chicago and probably unique, and the picturesque towers that establish Eppworth as a familiar visual feature in its neighborhood context. In addition to the criteria, in July, the Commission preliminarily found that Eppworth also meets a separate integrity criterion. Though its original suburban context has changed, at 131 years old, Eppworth possesses excellent integrity of design materials. The comparison of the circa 1920 photo at left and the current at right shows major changes included the community house addition at the side of the building and the Norpex at the entrance of the church, both from 1930 and both having achieved historic significance in their own right. In July, the Commission preliminarily found that the significant historic and architectural features of Eppworth to be all exterior elevations, including roof lines of the church building and the community house addition. So that concludes my staff presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. That concludes the staff's presentation. We will now take questions for the Commission staff. I want to reiterate that Mr. Jones, representing the owner, and any other party may ask questions of the staff. Questions must relate to whether the proposed designation meets the criteria set forth in the municipal code. Mr. Jones and Mr. Bedeker, do you have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions. Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will have presentations by parties to whom I have granted party status. We will begin with Mr. Jones, representing the owner. Mr. Jones, I have received your statement illustrated with photos, which I will define as Exhibit 1-Jones. The information appears to be relevant to this hearing and it will be incorporated into the record. Mr. Jones, I ask that you limit your presentation to 60 minutes. Please proceed and, for the record, start by stating your full name, organizational affiliation, address, and interest in the project.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michael R. Jones and I'm the Executive Director of Church Properties Reimagined. It's a nonprofit with the United Methodist Denomination located here in Chicago, Illinois with the Northern Illinois Conference. And speaking, Church Properties Reimagined owns the property currently and we are looking to go into partnership with Kurt Bedeker as the developer and own the building in partnership with Kurt to do 100% affordable housing. So thank you for allowing both Kurt and I to speak today with you regarding the landmarking of the Eppworth United Methodist Church on North Kenmore, which was built in 1898. The role of Church Properties Reimagined, or CPR, is to assist United Methodist congregations in the Chicago land area that own buildings that are beyond their financial capabilities to own and maintain. CPR has been given the task of converting the Eppworth UMC property from its former use as a church to another use that will benefit the Edgewater neighborhood. One of the guiding principles of the United Methodist Church is that of social justice for all, to make our communities a better place to live. Our social justice principle calls us to strive for the economic well-being of all people and for the care of our environment and the communities we serve. The goal of CPR with the Eppworth Church is to convert the property into 100% affordable housing. One of the issues facing many parts of the city is the gentrification of neighborhoods, making it difficult for many people working and living in those neighborhoods to continue to live in those areas for rising rents. Our hope is to help those most in need of affordable housing to be able to stay in the Edgewater neighborhood by providing affordable and quality housing. To be able to provide a location with 100% affordable housing, the project has to be able to fund itself completely through the rents and subsidies received. The number of affordable units in the building limits the amount of money that can be spent on the project so that it still remains feasible to provide 100% affordable housing in the Edgewater neighborhood. To provide one hundred percent affordable housing in the Edgewater neighborhood, the Upworth building has to be remodeled in a way that allows the project to be financially affordable. CPR cares that the Upworth Affordable Housing Project is also energy efficient so that it benefits the environment of the city by lowering, lowering its carbon footprint. I know it's important for the city of Chicago because of the climate infrastructure fund it has for people and businesses to lower their energy consumption. To that end, we want the Affordable Housing Project at Upworth to be highly energy efficient. This also lowers the cost for the residents living in the building, thus improving their lives economically. We believe the stone architecture of the former Upworth United Methodist Church is remarkable and a great characteristic of the neighborhood. And we consent to and believe landmarking of the stone facade and the roof line is good for the community and will preserve this icon in the neighborhood. We believe the windows and doors, though, should not be landmarked and that they are not a remarkable part of the building, nor do they add to the current looks of the building. The current windows and doors are not energy efficient and are not functional for the next use of the building as affordable housing. The windows of the sanctuary have been covered with plexiglass for years and only detract from the looks of the building. And then there's two pictures in the PDF that I've provided of those windows. The basement windows have steel bars that are part of the windows for security, and also those windows are single-pane or not energy efficient or functional for the purpose of affordable housing. And that'll be on the next page. And they also, because of the metal bars on the inside of those windows, do not allow for egress if they're in the garden-level apartments, which would be part of this development. And I'll have you slide to the next page if you would. The, the doors are not conducive to people living in the building since you cannot see through, through them, and they let no light into the building. So our hope would be to change the door entryways and windows of this property and to keep the facade of the building as it is, so that we can make it more energy efficient. And the next page, please. We consent to landmarking of the stone facade and roof line of the Upworth building because we believe those characteristics are remarkable and essential to maintaining its original character, architecture for the community to enjoy. We're asking the windows and doors not be landmarked so that they could be made more efficient and functional as windows that can be opened for residents living in those apartments, which will also improve the current looks of the building. And so, as part of Church Properties Reimagined, I've also helped other churches in the city apply for grants through the Climate Infrastructure Fund, where we are asking to replace windows with new Energy Star seven point oh windows that are much more energy efficient. And our hope is, and being able to not landmark the windows, it would allow us to provide a more energy-efficient windows, windows that can be opened by the residents on the interior of the building so they can get fresh air into their apartments. We're hoping to not landmark the doors so that we can change the doors for the type of doors that would be fit with this project for affordable housing. So now I'd like to introduce Kurt Beddicker, who the developer is that we are partnering with to build this one hundred percent affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Now we'll hear from Mr. Beddicker, who is also a party. Mr. Beddicker, as a non-owner party, you have twenty minutes. Mr. Beddicker, please proceed, and for the record, start by stating your full name, organizational affiliation, address, and interest in this project.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. My name is Kurt Beddicker. My company is Chicago Neighborhood Resources, twenty-eight seventy North Elston Avenue in Chicago. My affiliation with the property is a potential partner with the Church, Church Group Reimagined to turn the property into affordable housing. I do have a, a quick presentation. I apologize. This is my first time in front of landmarks commissions, so some of them may be relevant, some may not be. Can I share that, Commissioner?
Uh, yes, tech support, can you help us out with that? Or Matt, do you have a copy?
I can do it. I have it.
Okay, okay.
I want to make sure it's okay to, to, to share it.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So fifty-two fifty-three North Kenmore is, is a gorgeous church that is, it, it's definitely a landmark and absolutely a fantastic property. About Chicago Neighborhood Resources, I've been a receiver in the city of Chicago for fifteen years. I've done about a thousand, maybe a little bit more than a thousand stabilization projects for the city. One that I finished late last year, I'm sorry, twenty, we finished early twenty twenty-two, was the Laramie State Bank, which we, we got involved with as a receiver to stabilize the exterior facade and the roof while the eminent domain could take place at the property and, and become part of landmarks and brought back to life. One of our partners is M C Z Development. We just completed the project at fifty-seven hundred North Ashland, which was the old Edgewater Hospital, which has been successfully converted into a hundred and fifty-five unit redevelopment in the Edgewater neighborhood, or Andersonville neighborhood, around the corner from Edgewater, who has shown interest into working on this project with us as well. The mission here is to preserve a hundred-year-old building both physically and ethically for generations to come. We'd like to revitalize a historic troubled building that's currently vacant and a gentrifying neighborhood where rents are increasingly, increasing rapidly. The plan is to convert the existing church to forty to forty-five of foil residential apartments for tenants with an income of sixty percent area market income. The current conditions of the property in the inside, the property has been pretty much stripped of all historical relevance and sold off as the church was closing their doors and needed the funds to move on to other projects. There's multiple settling going on in the property. There's water leaks, roof leaks, and facade is, is definitely deteriorating fast. So times are the essence. The revitalization plan is a sub-project that was done by Rent Quest Development on Humboldt Avenue to revitalize an old church. The plan is with, with the existing windows and doors that are in place, it would be very cost-effective, or very cost-in effectively to replicate those windows and doors. We partnered with Fitzgerald Architecture, who has given us a preliminary layout of the units that they believe we can put into the, into the property. And the examples here are the layouts that we believe we can get in, a mixture of studios and one bedrooms, again, all affordable housing. The interior finishes would be of, of quality grade, of custom cabinetry and custom finishes, just as it was a hundred percent market area, market area property. But again, again, sixty percent affordable, sixty percent amen affordable. The construction hurdles with this project is we know there are funds available to assist in if we had to keep the existing doors and windows, but the length of completion would be three times longer as we would have to get everything custom-made and find those funds. The construction as well is three, three times as expensive, and it's also twice as much to, to maintain those custom doors and windows. So in conclusion, we, we agree that the property should be landmarked for the facade, but we would ask that the windows and doors be excluded in the landmarking status. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beddicker. Before we move on to, I don't have any questions of either of you. I'm familiar both with the building itself, the church. I lived for six years just down the block. And I appreciate showing the project on Humboldt Boulevard, which I live around the corner from now, and watch that project evolve over a number of years. It's really quite lovely to see it from the street view today. Before we move on to statements by members of the general public, if Alderman Osterman, you are here and you want to make a short statement, I want to invite you to do so. Okay, well, that seems like no for the time being, but please do raise your hand, Alderman, if you appear and would like to make a statement. So now we will move, we will hear statements, excuse me, from members of the general, of the general public regarding the proposed landmark designation. Statements may be made in favor of or in opposition to the proposed landmark designation. Statements from members of the general public are limited to three minutes. We have received four requests to, to speak from members of the general public. Please state your name when I call upon you, and it's spelling for the court reporter as well, please. Excuse me, we have a, a hand raised. Can you tell me who, can you identify who you are?
Hi, my name is Dan Luna. I'm the Chief of Staff for Alderman Osterman here in the Forty-Eighth Ward.
Hi, Mr. Luna.
Hi.
That's okay, would you?
The Alderman is, is kind of running back and forth between City Council and this meeting. But just for the record, Alderman Osterman wholeheartedly does support the landmark designation of this fantastic church and property here in the Forty-Eighth Ward. If I can get him up here before the hearing's over, I will do so. But again, he's a, he's kind of a busy downstairs right now with City Council.
We understand, Mr. Luna, thank you. And if Alderman is able to make it and just raise a hand, I'll try and keep my lookout, a lookout. And we'll, we want to make the time for, for him to speak himself if he is available.
Greatly appreciated.
For representing for him. You're welcome. So I'm going to backtrack to what I was starting to say. Now we will hear statements from the general public regarding the proposed landmark. Statements may be made in favor or in opposition to the proposed landmark, and they are limited to three minutes, please. We have received four requests to speak from members of the public. Please state your name and its spelling for the court reporter, your address, and the person or organization you represent, if applicable. First, I'd like to call on Bruce Green. Mr. Green, please proceed. I don't see Mr. Green, but I do have a hand raised from John Holden.
Yes, good afternoon, good morning. I'm sorry, I was not notified about the requirement for filing for advance participation, but I am the President of the Edgewater Historical Society and would like to speak very briefly in very strong favor of this recommendation.
Mr. Holden, why not, can you, I want to ask you to pause, and we'll go through first the four folks who have made a request, and I think we should have time to accommodate you as well, okay? A humble reminder would be if I, if I forget to come back to you, just please raise your hand again, Mr. Holden, thank you. So, Mr. Green, I'm gonna call for one more time. I don't see you on my Zoom screen of speakers, so I'm gonna wait just maybe ten more, fifteen more seconds. And if we don't hear from you, Mr. Green, we'll move on.
We do have someone on the phone, so if they wanted to hit star nine to raise their hand, they could do that.
Okay, thank you, Serena. Still without hearing from Mr. Green, we'll move on. But Mr. Green, if you appear, or Serena, if you see that individual, we'll, we'll make sure that we make the time. Next, I will call on Killian Walsh. Mr. Walsh, please proceed. Okay, well, it looks like Mr. Walsh is also not with us today. So we will move on to the, the statement from requested individual number two, number three, excuse me, Adam Natenshon, forgive me if I mispronounced your last name, of Preservation Chicago. Go ahead, Mr. Natenshon.
Hello and good morning. My name is Adam Natenshon. Thank you.
Natenshon, thank you.
Natenshon, thank you. It's a tough one to pronounce correctly, so no worries at all. And the spelling is N A T E N S H O N. Director of Operations for Preservation Chicago, and we're at two oh five West Monroe Street, Suite four hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six zero six. Dear Chairman Burns, DPD, Commission on Chicago Landmark Staff, Stakeholders, and the Public, it is an honor to have an opportunity to speak on, on this important building. Please note that I am here representing Ward Miller, Executive Director of Preservation Chicago, who would have liked to have attended himself, but he is currently testifying in support of the endangered century and consumers' buildings on State Street during the same hour. We at Preservation Chicago fully support the report from the Department of Planning and Development, which establishes strong support for the Chicago Landmark Designation of Upworth United Methodist Church and the adjoining Parish House and Community Building located at fifty-two fifty-three North Kenmore Avenue in Chicago. We are of the opinion that Upworth Church and the Upworth Complex is an outstanding example of a unique building style designed and constructed over time by a series of architects, which already have designated Chicago landmark buildings attributed to their work. These architects include Frederick Townsend, eighteen ninety, and Fieldbar Fugard from the nineteen thirties additions. The building was added to the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand eight, about fifteen years ago, and is also an ordinance-rated building in the Chicago Historic Resources Survey published in nineteen ninety-six, about twenty-seven years ago. Over the decades, multiple independent entities have considered the historic significance of Upworth and all have arrived at the same conclusion. This building clearly meets the criteria of a historic building and is deserving for a Chicago landmark designation. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have turned my camera on.
We could see you now.
Okay, sorry about that. In addition to its architectural legacy, Upworth has an amazing history linked to the founders of Edgewater, the Edgewater Community, including John Cochran, and continues to be an important resource in the community until the present day. This house of worship had provided all sorts of humanitarian services to the community for decades, including housing and overnight shelter for those less fortunate. Preservation Chicago has worked with the Edgewater Historical Society and Alderman Harry Osterman's office for many years on preservation issues in the Edgewater community, and also shared our long-term concerns for Upworth Church, noting its diminishing congregation size and change in leadership over time. Therefore, we at Preservation Chicago fully support the Chicago Landmark Designation of Upworth Church and Parish House Community Buildings with its, the protection of all of the complex's facades, tower, roof line, windows and doors, and arc glass windows, including the Healy and Millay window and on its principal elevation front in Kenmore Avenue. There are many examples throughout the city where this has been done and been done very successfully. Additionally, Chicago Landmark Designation status would provide additional potential resources, which we would strongly encourage the developer to consider taking advantage of. We would also like to request that consideration be given to protecting the visual sightlines of Upworth Church from both Kenmore and Berwin Avenues. Currently, the view shed from Kenmore Avenue allows the full west elevation of the parish house and south elevation of the church to be viewed from the public right away. And that's so important. As a lovely garden and grassy area currently exists in the area, in this location, it would be beneficial to respect the current setback as a green space in perpetuity in a very dense neighborhood and corridor, as it provides important sunlight and air and benefits the quality of life for, for future residents and neighbors as well. Ideally, any new construction would not obscure the church or the parish house, and we would encourage the commission to consider this open space as part of the landmark protections. We are encouraged by this new development direction. Additionally, we are confident that there are multiple developers with strong interest in a preservation-sensitive reuse of the building of this complex. Prior to this particular process, we helped to bring a foundation with interest in maintaining a religious use and shelter use in the building. More recently, we've been in touch with at least two additional developers who have indicated strong interest in the building complex, should it become a designated Chicago. should it become a designated Chicago landmark. We, in conclusion, we strongly support the landmark designation of Upworth United Methodist Church and the adjoining parish house and community building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Natenshon. Let's see. Next, we have, we'd like to hear from Max Chavez of Preservation Chicago. Mr. Chavez?
Hi there, can you hear me?
I sure can. Thank you.
Perfect. Hi, good morning. Good morning. My name is Max Chavez, last name spelled C H A V E Z. I am the Director of Research and Special Projects of Preservation Chicago. And I just want to echo Adam's comments and and just restate our organization's strong support for the landmarking of Upworth Church and as well as the protection from demolition that this designation would provide. We've endorsed the landmarking of the structure for some time now, and we continue to do so now that the that landmark status is so close at hand. The complex, designed in phases in eighteen ninety-one and nineteen thirty, is a terrific example of architecture from both of these eras. The original church structure, as has been discussed, is a very special design, very much unlike many other churches in Chicago in terms of its outward appearance, thanks to the generous application of uncoarse field stones all over the building as its exterior cladding, which Matt explained so thoroughly early in this presentation. The result of this material application contributes to a very rustic, almost countryside appearance, and that speaks to the overall sort of appearance and aesthetic of the then fledgling Edgewater community, which at the time was a more of a far-flung suburb of the city of Chicago. It's hard to imagine it today. The eighteen ninety-one church structure, as has been mentioned, was designed by Townsend, and surely he's one of the more significant architects of this era in Chicago. And he's been honored with landmark recognition already with the Five Houses on Avers District amongst others, so there's certainly a precedent here for landmarking his portion of the Upworth Church. The the adjoining structure is also a great piece of architecture in and of itself. It speaks to both its era of design while also working closely in context with Townsend's design. And they create, it creates an addition that really works harmoniously with its architectural partner. And together, they form a really wonderful hub of the Edgewater community. And there are both architectural relics in an era that has seen so much of its historic fabric altered or outright demolished, particularly with regards to its earliest designs from developer J L Cochran, who developed the Edgewater community. There's really nothing else like it in Edgewater or surrounding communities, and we're glad that efforts have been made to honor and every portion of this very important place. You know, all these details together really tell a great story about Edgewater and its history. So, you know, again, we just, we hope that Upworth soon receives official landmark designation. We're more than happy to continue to offer our team support towards this end, and we're really optimistic for a positive outcome here that shows our city's commitment to protecting irreplaceable architecture, heritage and craftsmanship. So, thank you for your careful consideration during this hearing. We look forward to a decision and next steps. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chavez. No one else has signed up in advance to speak today, but I will invite Mr. Holden to speak. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and for the record, start by stating your name, organizational affiliation, address, and interest in the project.
Thank you very much. My name is John Holden. I am the President of the Edgewater Historical Society. We are a thirty-five-year-old community-based historical society located at Museum at fifty-three fifty-eight North Ashland Avenue in the Edgewater community. I will not belabor the conversation here, but I wanted to thank the prior speakers for their outstanding presentations, and I think most of the relevant facts about the Upworth Complex have been noted by the past prior speakers. The Edgewater community is blessed with over a half dozen very unusual and beautiful religious structures in the community, but there is nothing quite like Upworth. Upworth is especially unique in that it was taken on by the developer of the community itself. The property for it was donated by John Louis Cochran, so it really is very much of a cornerstone for the community. As was previously noted, it's located in a very dense corridor, the Kenmore-Winterup Corridor, which runs through the uptown and Edgewater communities. Much of the original built environment of that area has been altered or destroyed for much newer and much higher density housing in the area, so this open campus plan of the Upworth Complex is, as was previously noted, very much provides very much needed open space and green space that benefits not only the people in the immediate vicinity, but all those who pass through the community. The church itself, we were very disappointed in the interior alterations and the harvesting of all the beautiful interior features of the building, but we are most concerned about the maintenance of the exterior of the building. There's been a lot of conversation over the last year or so about possible future uses and possible adaptations of the space. We would like to say that we are very much supportive of maintaining the exterior of the building. At this point, I'm not sure that we're ready to take a position on the windows and doors, as was discussed previously, but I will revisit this with members of our landmark committee at the Historical Society and hopefully have a more definitive opinion to offer in the future. The call-out by Preservation Chicago of the importance of the open space around the complex and maintaining the visual sightlines of the entire complex, I think is something that the Historical Society would very much be in support of. So, without that, I would also like to say I'm sorry that Mr. Green and Killian Welch, who is a member of our board, were not able to be here this morning, but I want to thank them especially for their very dedicated work towards getting this to the landmark stage. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. I don't see any other hands raised, so this concludes today's public hearing. The commission will consider the entire record, including the transcript of today's hearing, at its regular meeting on Thursday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at twelve forty-five P M, and determine whether to make a final recommendation to the City Council on the proposed landmark designation of Upworth Church. This will be a virtual meeting, simulcast to the general public via livestream. Thank you for attending today. We are adjourned.